Are these adjustments that have to be made for the third of the month?
Was that in the audit report?
Yeah, it was in this letter. This is what we had. My computer says it's 7:00. What does yours say?
All right, we trust your computer. Mine says 7:01.
No, actually, that's what mine says, too. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And start with... Pledge of Allegiance.
Senior moment.
Yes. Pledge of Allegiance.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
I don't have a computer with me right now. I know it's on the... I know it is on the website. I know John posted it.
We've got a downhill election of officers, okay, down there.
Yeah, we may want to take that first after we...
Okay, now let's... How about approval of the agenda?
I just, I don't have a... I left everything at home. I don't have a full report, but I'll just give a little update on one of the things that happened at the school board meeting.
Okay. Oh, yes, I had RSU Finance meeting paperwork at home, and I left it on the desk.
Yeah.
All right, motion to approve the agenda as amended. Okay, all in favor? And how far down do we go before we elect new officers?
Business. Oh, I should... Yeah, I should have moved that.
Okay.
Is somebody leaving?
No, we're changing. I'm handing the gavel to somebody else.
You have a sheet of, like, put it all together. You have a sheet on top, the chairman, and then we have the chairman, the vice chair, the secretary. Then you have Board Selectmen Code of Conduct. You have the Board Selectmen Policy. And then the Selectmen's Committee Assignments. And then the annual appointments to be made. It all should be in there. I put it in that sequence. If you want to change it, you can, but that's how they put it together.
Okay, well, do you want to wait until we get down there and...
Yeah, let's...
Okay. All right, okay, public forum. Any member of the public with something not on the agenda may speak now. Has Michelle... Michelle's with you, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so much for public forum. Approve the minutes of May 24th.
Make a motion we approve as submitted.
Motion's are made and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor? All righty. Let's do committee and board reports. Dan, you have a RSU?
Yeah, so, you know, last Monday, we had the RSU Board Directors Meeting. I got there, I logged on late. As I was in the middle of something, forgot all about it. And I didn't take a whole bunch of notes, whatever notes I left at home. But the thing that I wanted to talk a little bit about is, so they... There was a lot of discussion, and they ended up actually going into executive session in the middle of the meeting on... The Assistant Superintendent. So there was, they were having an Assistant Superintendent opening. There was a lot of discussion on, they had an individual that was identified. There was all kinds of discussion on... There were board members that had no clue that this was going on. They were asking about, you know, where did the job description come from? And so they actually ended up going into executive session. Then they came out of executive session. During executive session, there were still a bunch of people that were on the Zoom meeting, and that is still open. And there was just comments going back and forth, right? Comments, you know, about this, this person should have got it, blah, 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 you know? So there was a lot of that going on. Then they came back, and they started with discussion, and then they... Somebody made a motion to move the vote. A bunch of the public got really upset about that because they never had a chance to speak. And then it went on. So I, that was the biggest thing. Everything else was just, you know, normal, nothing of significance. So I'm sure we're going to hear a little bit more about that as time goes on, so...
Apparently, the person who has been in the position for quite some time, who had also applied, was not the person that got the job.
Correct, correct. I mean, the person that got the job is highly qualified. There's no doubt about it. But, you know, I guess I'm not sure why...
And a lot of people were very upset over that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's all I have as far as the school board.
How about managers' report? The York County Commissioners' public hearing?
Yes, I placed in the bag the two public hearing motions that were provided to us. The first would be a public hearing being held by the York County Commissioners on June 16, beginning at 2:00 p.m. Looking for feedback or thoughts on uses of funding allocated to the York County Government under the American Rescue Plan Act. They indicate where that's going to be. And then it looks like they're going to have another public hearing, essentially on the same subject matter, on the 23rd of June, beginning at 10:00 a.m., to solicit the same information. So if any of you are interested in that, certainly have the information. In reference to, I was hoping that I may have some additional information relative to the closing of Law Cabin Road for the River Road stuff. I have not yet heard... I reached out again last week and have not heard back as to when they tend to have decided on when that's going to start. So I suspect it indicated to me that it was going to start June, almost halfway through June now. Unfortunately, I think they're probably going to give us a couple of days' notice, and then we're going to be right into that. So as soon as I know, I'll let you all know, and we'll do our due diligence to get information out to the public so they have an idea and make sure our public safety folks are also notified as well. So we just have to wait to see what's going to happen there.
Keith, it wouldn't hurt to notify Kenny McPort when that happens, too.
Yeah, I've been in contact with the town manager down there, so she's well aware. Because I, initially, they weren't part of the communication group, but seeing that Law Cabin is vital for their, for their job in public during the summer, it's appropriate to let it out.
Well, we'll know when it's closed on River Road, because all of a sudden, the traffic, which is heavy enough that theirs will become bumper to bumper.
Certainly will.
Yeah.
The other, the other thing I wanted to chat about is that I've had only one inquiry, but I suspect that I may have more. And that is the reuse movement, the transfer station. As you know, when COVID-19 hit, we closed the media's room. I then had Public Works go up and do a complete cleaning of the room. There was a lot of materials left in there, and we cleaned it. There was some, Roger and I opened up this past week. There are still some books on some shelves, but essentially, it's open. There's, there's some, I think, there's a sentiment in town that, you know, we're going to open it again. I think I've made my, my thoughts known in reference to the reused room and its continued use. I am not, I'm not a proponent of having it. I know it's been used in the past. I have seen what has been left. Presently, what happens is there's no staff that actually manages the room, so it just becomes an accumulation of artifacts and materials that gets left there for a long period of time until, until we really generally just can't walk through there to access the back ramp where we keep refrigerators and air conditions before they get, the freon gets taken out and they get thrown away. So then I have to essentially send Public Works up there to, again, do a cleaning and then start all over again. So my thought is, is that there is a bunch of organizations out there that are, are pretty good about taking materials from the, if in fact, they're in good shape, clothing, other furniture items, so on and so forth. So my initial thought is, is to not reopen it. And I don't know what the board feels about it, if you've had any, any discussions with other citizens relative to it, what you wish for us to do right now. I've had one inquiry, but I thought it was something that we should probably discuss. I haven't heard anything.
I just had one person ask while we were going to open it up again.
It was Ash Tonner, we'll chat a while back, too.
Yeah.
I don't remember by who, but...
I agree with the staff issue, though. You know, the arguments we've heard about the transfer station, they all seem to leave the recycling and trash being shorthanded, so...
Right.
I don't know if a volunteer would step up, like a community member, and run it maybe like half a day on Saturday or something, I don't know. If somebody wanted it open that bad, maybe that would be an option, you know? Yeah, someone donated their time or something.
I certainly have gone in there before, and there was a lot of junk. A lot of junk that was put in there that, I mean, one man's junk is somebody else's treasure, but it's like stuff that's just, I don't know, didn't seem to be very useful.
Why don't we leave it closed, and every person who wants it open, we let them know that would they like to volunteer to spend a couple of hours up there so that we can keep it open and have somebody, have somebody there to kind of monitor it and see what happens?
So if we do that, when that person is not there and people leave stuff, who's responsible for, you know, and do we end up paying for stuff that should be thrown away? Right? Because it's just going to go right next door into the dumpsters.
We do. That's exactly what happens.
Yeah.
Does it need to regulate what's left in there?
Yeah.
Some of it should have been dumped, right? If they're immediate.
Yeah, it's a, it's an issue not, not only here, but every community that's running one of these reuse rooms, it becomes a challenge. And oftentimes, people, you know, when they, when there's a lot of enthusiasm for it, folks will sit there and wait for somebody to drop off stuff, and they're claiming it or looking at it before it gets out of the vehicle into the reuse room. I've seen that happen many times. So I'm just not a proponent of it right now, but I, I think, I do like the suggestions. We'll continue to, maybe we'll put something on the, on the website that, you know, that folks can comment on it, and we see if there's volunteers out there that wish to tackle it.
The other thing, too, is, that I've noticed, is it becomes a hangout place, you know? And then that just adds the congestion of the traffic over there.
Yeah, because they don't, they'll back their car up to take out their trash, get out of their car, and go into the reuse room.
Yeah, just stay there for a couple hours or whatever, and...
Okay, I'm not, I'm not getting real enthusiastic from the, from the crowd here, so we'll leave it the way it is right now. We'll see how the public responds to that.
Okay, on to business. I declare the chair vacant. We need to elect a new chairman.
Make a motion we elect Tom Danlich.
Any other nominations? Dan, all in favor?
Do you accept Tom?
Would you pass that to Tom? It's his. I make a motion we elect Dan Dubois as vice chair.
Second. Second.
There's your offices for the year.
Must be in a skirt next time.
Sure you do. Do you want to do the rest of them? Want to selectmen code of conduct? It's essentially the same that you've adopted in the past, officially adopted on January 22, 2007. I have a copy here. You so take a motion, second. I will pass them on for signatures.
Hey, I make a motion that we, we accept and sign the as proposed Town of Rundle Board of Selectmen Code of Conduct.
I'll second that.
I have two copies, Keith. Is there a difference between the two?
You got two copies. It's because I probably double-sided it, so I'll just pass down one which has the double side.
Yeah.
There's no amendments to this anywhere?
No, I think that was the original one that we adopted back in 2007. I will stay with the RSU Finance Committee.
I will also stay with the directors, RSU 21 Directors. And I want to start attending some of the planning board meetings, so I can fill in also between, between you.
We didn't have any, any from CPA.
Yep. Second.
There you go. That's my turn.
So speaking of appointments, are you, have you heard back from, I think it's Tom McGinn, right, that's due for Planning Board?
Yes.
Is he interested in...
Mr. McGinn has indicated to me via email that he's still interested, so I'll bring that forward at your, I'll bring those appointments forward at your meeting on the 20, was it the 28th or 24th?
And how many folks do you have that were interested in planning boards that are still...
I still have, I have three other folks, two, no, two other folks. Yeah, we're interested. So we have a good, good group of people who consider...
She should just be able to click right on the, right from the, the link on the, on the website, right? Is that, you can turn a mic on there, Henry, if that mic is...
Hi.
Michelle Allen, please leave your name and number.
All right, Michelle. You there? Okay. All right, we're going to try this, okay, Michelle?
Yep.
Got my hearing aids on full blast, too, so... Yeah.
Just usually, Mike can't reach close to the phone.
What's that?
Mike, close to the phone, so that whatever she talks, we get it on record.
So I submitted a Mass Gathering permit for the Run and Contamination Trust Trail Fast for September 25th.
Yep, we got a copy of it.
If, if I may, I reviewed the, I reviewed the document on behalf of the, you know, technically, if we got it properly, where I signed off on it for the, for the use of the parking lot, the restroom facilities, one of the here, for their function. It will take action by the selectmen, as you can see on the, I think it's the last page, whether we stand, we need to deny or grant it. The only issue I saw was, there was, there's some sections on insurance and bonding. Presently, they have a general liability insurance that was named before. I looked at the date the other day, it's expired, so we'll have to have the trust redo the general liability insurance. The only other thing is whether or not we're going to require them to have a bond for participation. When I look at the insurance, insurance has, the liability insurance had stuff for physical damage, things along that line. So as I'm looking at it, if they had, if somebody came in and trashed the bathrooms or something, I think they have the insurance that's capable of taking care of that. I will just double-check it to make sure. In, of the opinion that we probably don't need the bond. They're going to have their own, you know, folks here, their own PA system. They'll have folks assisting during the Trail Fest. So I think based on anything else that I, that I read, that was the only other things that I had that were of issue to me.
I would like to add, if we, actually, I'll just, I'll make a, a motion that we waive the permit fee.
It's already been paid, but we can do that.
Do you probably want to send them on, go to the names?
Yes.
So I think we can get that from our insurance, Henry. We just talked to Joan because she has the contact for our insurance.
Right, we'll do that.
Yep.
And I just had one problem, question, comment, and ask, the medical piece, what we're putting together, a first aid plan for the, for the Eastern Trail application. We have this Mass Gathering permit beginning with Eastern Trail, we're using a lot of the... So I was just, what we're considering is volunteer EMTs. Do you require, do you require a gap in half side of your first aid?
No, I took it upon myself to con, to talk to Chief Volier in reference to that, indicating that he will have an EMT here for your function, for your charge to be agreed on.
Yep.
Awesome. Yeah, that was my only thing that I had jotted down.
So you consider what part of the... Uh, yeah, we have, we're going to be using all parts of the class, and we've got a, an application in RSU 21 to use MLAs for all.
Oh, Jen has agreed to be a driver with the rec bus.
So the only outstanding thing is the bond, right?
Yep, whether or not you're going to require it. If you are, then we will just tell them.
Yeah, so I, I, let me just kind of redo my motion because it hasn't been seconded yet. Is that okay, Mr. Chair? So I, I make a motion that we, we approve this permit. Condition, first condition is that we waive the fee, and then the other condition is that they, they get the proper insurance bond.
You want, you want the bond, too?
Or just insurance?
They're going to have general liability insurance.
Yeah.
And you want them to also have the bond? Bond is different.
Yeah, yeah, no, the insurance, yeah, just the insurance. Yeah, 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 yep.
So you're waiving a bond?
Correct.
Okay, so motion to approve the Mass Gathering permit, waiving the, and then waiving the bond.
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Welcome.
Let me send this down, and I'll have to sign this.
Number 25?
Number 25.
How many do you expect? How many folks do you expect at this trail?
Well, I put down an application, 200, but, you know, if you get, we get 100, 200, 300.
That's great. I, I've heard that they become very popular with these types of events now, so it'd be nice to, nice to see.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to showcase it.
Yep.
No.
No.
Yeah, I moved to approval.
I'll second that.
Yeah, do I have a couple of questions? Keith, did you, were you going to bring, was this going to be this, this financial audit? Was this going to be an agenda item at some point in time? Okay, okay, so I'll wait for my comments on that.
That was my thought. If you want the auditors to be present, we can have them come. Do you want the auditors to be present or you can have them come at that meeting as well? If that's something you could like to add?
No, I just got a couple of questions and I think you can probably answer those. The other thing that I have, Mr. Chair, again, a couple of other items. Have we heard anything more on the campground road property?
Yeah, I'm happy you brought it up. It's something that I was going to address with you. I would like to, I'd like to have the attorney come into executive session at your next meeting to discuss that particular property. Particularly as it portrays under the dangerous building statute. Providing the owner an abundance of time to, to do something with this. And I think it's, it's time for us to perhaps look at another avenue of enforcement to try to get that done. So yes, it'll be on your agenda. You know, I think there are strong objections. She'll, she'll be here and we can discuss it with her.
Okay. And then can we start working on the Old Town Hall?
Yeah. I will begin the, the process of trying to gather some more detailed estimates on, in terms of, of raising the building. And we'll see what those costs associated with. They picked one of your colleagues' brains a couple of times here. But we'll try to come together, put something together here soon during the summertime and we can take some sort of action.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't decided as a, as a board what to do with it. So we certainly need to discuss it, what we're going to do. I think we're all on the same page, but.
And have some numbers to look at when we do.
Okay. And then, and looking at the, in the, the town book. So we've got H R E Arundel LLC that owes like $18,000 in back taxes.
Who was it again?
H R E Arundel LLC.
Okay.
Do we know who they are or?
Have to do some research.
Yeah. I'm just kind of curious, I mean, that seems like a lot of money. And then same thing with Holly's, you know, 2017, 18, 19, 20, it's not a whole lot of money, but, you know.
They're, from what I understand, that's a bankruptcy.
Is it? Okay, that's, yeah, I kind of, I thought it might be, but I wasn't sure, but.
But the other one is H R E?
Yeah, it's like 8,500 for one year and 9,800 for another year. I mean, it's 18,000, I mean, yeah, $18,000, that's some good, good chunk of change there.
Okay.
Jason?
One more, ready? I move to adjourn.
Second. You can give it to Phil.